To order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Hart.
Here.
Hachkis.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Here.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
And there's no public comment for items not on the agenda, so we'll open and close that and go right to the Police Department Budget Chief Crumbak.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the City Council. The one thing that staff didn't know much about is don't challenge me. This was a challenge this morning to bring attention to National Red Nose Day, and so -- good morning, everyone. Now, I will get on with business.
That could be page one.
If some had their way, it would have been, sir. So this morning, we're going to -- we have a brief presentation, and so me along with my very able business manager, Lori Peterson, will be presenting our 2017 fiscal plan. So we're going to do a brief department overview, proposed changes to the originally proposed fiscal budget for 2017, proposed fee changes, and then discussion on key initiatives and performance objectives. So this is the organizational chart as it exists today. Two hundred and twelve full-time employees in the organization, one hundred and forty-three sworn officers. And as you know, one of the key initiatives has been to aggressively address the staffing shortages. To date, we have -- we're down to twelve vacancies. We have eight people in the academy. We originally put nine in, and one has withdrawn. And then we have seven people out injured, and so we're slowly getting some of those injured people back to work. Projected for the next -- our next fiscal year will be with our aggressive hiring. We will have twelve people in the academy. We anticipate having additional people return from injured status, and then we will have -- we believe we'll be down to just a manageable amount of vacancies, which would be considered a normal attrition, maybe five, six vacancies. So in this chart, it just gives you a snapshot of where people are located in the organization. I do want to point out that where it says chief staff and support services, that should be support services, and I just fit in there with them. I didn't want you to think I had twenty-six people personally attached to me, which was almost as many investigative staff. So you can just get an idea of where people are situated in the organization. And with that, then Lori's going to take on the proposed changes for the 2017 plan.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Lori Peterson, and I'm the business manager at the Police Department, and I'm going to present the financial information for fiscal year 2017. This first slide shows you the funds that support the Police Department. The general fund subsidy is about three point five million -- thirty-five point five million. We bring in general fund revenues into the department of almost five million, and then we receive -- or we've budgeted for this next fiscal year about $300,000 in grants and other revenues that come in. That number will go up as the year progresses and as grants are received. We don't usually budget grants until they're actually received. For this year, there are really very minor changes proposed in our revenues. There were some minor reductions done in service fees, really just to reflect the current activity levels in those fee areas. And then we made a slight increase in parking citation revenue just through the collection process, anticipating a little more revenue coming in. Overall, like I said, our budget stays the same. We reduced taxes, fees, and fines, which are things like copying fees, dismissal fees, release fees. We've reduced those categories down, again, just to reflect the actual activity. So pretty much a status quo budget. Here's the breakdown of the general fund revenue that we anticipate bringing in. Two point eight million in parking violations. We have a small contract with the school districts for the crossing guard program. Our fees and fines, the half-cent sales tax, service charges, and internal charges.
Can you explain what you mean by the half-cent sales tax?
That's the budgeted amount from finance, that the half-cent sales tax.
So it's the subsidy -- it's --
Is there a --
The city gets a half a cent?
Right.
And then this is the Police Department's portion of that?
Yes. Madam Mayor, members of the council, that was from Prop. 172. That's our allocation.
Okay, not -- okay, that's Prop. 172.
Yes.
Prop. 172, that's our allocation from that. Okay, thanks.
On the expense side, again, very much --
Mr. Hart, did you have a question?
Is there -- is this where you would record assets and forfeitures, or where would those be?
Asset forfeitures is actually located in our little slice of the pie here under Grants, SLESF, and asset forfeiture.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's just it comes in under the other funds revenue.
And it's a pretty darn small share of everything. Okay, thank you.
On the expenditure side, again, very minimal adjustments, reductions done, again, to make a balanced budget. The reductions were taken in supplies and services, a slight increase in salaries and benefits, and overall, pretty much a status quo. As you can see, the majority of our expenses are in salaries and benefits at three point five -- thirty-five point five million, sorry. And allocated costs are the city costs, our share of receiving services from other city departments. And then we have a small, non-capital equipment category, which includes things like computer hardware and purchases of various pieces of equipment for patrol, range, the lab, and animal control. So that's where you see that. And then supplies and services, your basic administrative-type expenses.
I have a question.
Yeah.
The expenditures, I notice your salaries, there's a recommended increase. Now, the original plan, did that take into account vacancies?
The increases are due to just the basic benefit changes for this next fiscal year, so that there's no change in the staffing levels.
And so when we put together the original estimate, is that taking into account vacant positions, since we have a high vacancy rate in your department?
Yeah. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we budget for the allocated positions. The vacancies you will see come up in the year-end variance that comes from the department, that's just salary expenses that aren't expended because of the vacancies. And so that's where that comes into play. We still keep it fully budgeted at the amount of sworn positions that council's directed us to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hart? Did you have another question? Okay.
For us, there were some minor fee changes that we needed to make in our fee schedule. Most of them were administrative-type corrections. There is one addition of a new fee, and I'll cover that when we get to that. In Animal Control, we just changed the format language in the fee schedule so that it was easier to read and people could understand what the various fees were for each type of license. Dance permits, we removed a late fee that was included in the fee schedule, and that was because the code does not allow us to charge a late fee. If your application is not received in a timely fashion, then you begin the process all over again. So just, again, a correction to match how the code is laid out.
Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Peterson, I was wondering, in the report, in terms of both in expenditures and in fee recovery, about the SNAP program, is that something that's in a separate category? Are we going to talk about that a little bit later on, or?
So the SNAP program hasn't gone fully forward to be implemented, so it is not represented in this budget, but when we receive the funds and move forward and actually execute the program, we will bring it to council, and you'll see it at that point, and we'll revise our budget.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, on that program, the City College is contributing $100,000, which we're wrapping up that MOU to receive that money. And then our expectation is that whatever fines we -- revenue we get from the fines as part of the SNAP program will help to fund the SNAP program, and so we're going to set up that accounting procedure once we have that in place, but we'll do that when we bring that program back for kicking it off.
Thank you. And then SBBC money is not reflected anywhere here yet?
Correct.
Another change in language is for special event permits. We don't anticipate any additional revenue. It's just asking for 50% upfront for the larger special events that are held within the city. The parameters are sixty total staff hours or in excess of $5,000 in estimated expense, and so the applicant would pay that at the time that they received their event permit. And then the balance would be due at the end of the event. If there was, for some reason, an overpayment, that would be refunded to the party. The new fee that was added is the car share permit, so if someone parks in violation of the car share program when it gets implemented, we now have those fees in the fee schedule in order to right those violations and charge the fees. We also did a minor adjustment on our online fee to reflect the current vendor two-dollar online fee, processing fee.
Excuse me, online fee, what does that mean? What do you mean?
When you pay for your parking citation online, there's a processing fee of $2 that goes with that. And then, again, no significant revenue is anticipated from these changes. Mostly, it was administratively done. And then this will go back to the chief.
Question on that online fee, the extra charge, is because somebody else runs the program and we have to pay them?
Yeah. Even in our old system, when we had a vendor who was running it, that's -- they charge a fee in order to accept online payments, so it's pretty --
That's what that is.
-- standard business. Right now, the average, though, is between $3.50 and $4 a transaction, so we're still on the low end, and while it is a fee, it's a less expensive one.
But what percent do we get, our payments made online, do we know?
Probably over 50%.
Over 50%.
Yeah.
So the discussion now moves to key initiatives, and this, in essence, is what you get, what you pay for, is the focus that the organization will place in the next fiscal year. Now, understand that these are very broad, overreaching initiatives that involve all facets of the organization. These really become everyone's responsibility. And number one, the bullet -- first bullet, develop community policing strategies to address problems of crime, traffic, quality of life, including our restorative efforts with homeless. So this is -- it's a philosophical approach. It's a way of doing business in addressing neighborhood issues, addressing actual crime issues, and certainly traffic issues, but it's with a partnership with the community. It's a partnership with other resources, bringing in to not just kind of -- I hear this term a lot, kick the can down the road, is actually to examine what's the root cause and work on solving that problem. So this is the philosophy of the organization and how we will be doing business, and so that is key to our success. Number two is to continue youth outreach through the Santa Barbara Police Department, Police Activities League and Explorer Post, and there's some other things that fall into that area with prevention intervention strategies, but addressing issues of our youth are key. Aggressively -- oh, I'm sorry. Collaborative efforts with other agencies on intelligence gathering and enforcement to address gang and youth violence. This is something that we have recently engaged with Santa Barbara County Probation and some community-based organizations to -- and then outside other policing agencies to really kind of become a force multiplier in not being siloed in our approach, but to bring everything in together to examine where we should best put our efforts in this area of gang and youth violence. And we believe that with the help of some of these other organizations, we'll be able to have a little more far-reaching impact, but also not just being the suppression component, but also engage prevention intervention strategies to allow some of these young folks to potentially get out of their life and come back into a mainfold in the community. We will continue to enhance our recruitment and hiring efforts and bring staffing up throughout the organization. That remains a key goal and will be until we reach that area where we believe we're -- our target is about 95% staffed, which will take us to a normal attrition process. And then that is just then simply planning for scheduled retirements, and then also forecasting academies and becoming more of a normal business instead of where we're at, kind of in this crisis mode. And we will aggressively pursue state and federal funding opportunities that enhance our policing efforts and traffic safety. There is a variety of opportunities that are out there through the Department of Justice and juvenile justice, so along with the State Office of Traffic Safety, and we are going to aggressively maximize those opportunities. Some of the performance measures, so we ask what's the -- how do we look and see how we're doing our job? And the performance measures, and while some of these would reflect on a more, I guess, past model of policing, they are still very important, and they're important to the community, is the answering of 911 calls, and then how quickly we get to the call in those emergency situations. And so we want to pick up the phone within five seconds or less and then maintain a response time that is below seven minutes. So from the time that phone rings to the time that we're arriving on scene, we want it to be within that seven-minute bracket. So sometimes when you hear the sirens and see the lights, that's an effort to get there quickly and safely and then be able to address that emergency. As I just mentioned, 95% staffing levels for authorized positions. And then the community liaison, this is something that is, you know, I don't want to get the sense that we're going to be counting the beans on this one. It's going to become a daily -- this is just going to be the way we're doing business in terms of the people who are working the downtown having almost a constant contact with the downtown business, the merchants, and we're just going to be a regular face in and out of their doorway and on the street. It's -- I had an interesting experience. Last week, I took a walk with them, actually, up and down State Street, and I was immensely impressed with the relationship and the connectivity they had, not only with some of the more regular people on State Street, but also the merchants. We want to expand our neighborhood watch presence in neighborhoods in the community and provide them with leadership and training and prevention techniques. Oftentimes, we find that some of the incidence of crime in our community is we just have not educated our residents, and they become targets of opportunity. And so this is going to be one of our measures of success, but also a key effort in prevention. And then, again, we have this Explorer Post. We kind of refer this male sports metaphor as our farm club. These are the people who we look to bring in at a very young age, who have an interest in policing, and develop them. They can become our CSOs, our police officers, our dispatchers, records clerks. We find their area of interest and then look to put them in, and also encourage them to continue their education so they become good contributing members of the community, but also members of our organization. Our restorative policing program, while we say we want a minimum of 35 active cases at all times, we currently have over 120, and so an effort will be placed to put additional resources into that program. But this is a performance measure that we -- I think we set the bar a little bit low here, but we will continue to make this a very active and significant priority. And then we talk about the grants. I hate to put myself or the new chief up on the table here to say we're going to apply for and receive, because there's no guarantee we're going to receive, but we're going to be, as I said, aggressively pursuing grant opportunities, not only in traffic enforcement, but in all areas. There are significant opportunities there for where we can enhance our efforts, and also it helps partner with other organizations like behavioral health and community-based organizations, so it's not just a policing opportunity, but it is an opportunity to actually engage in collaborative efforts and then quality service to the community. And that's the end of the show.
Any questions? Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, one thing in the beginning of the presentation, and tell me if I've got this number wrong. I was under the impression at one point in time we were up to 145 authorized sworn, and we got 143 on the report. Have I got that number wrong? It's altogether possible. Frank's telling me I do.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this came up a couple months ago as well. We went back and checked, and it's 143 that our number is at right now.
Wishful thinking, all right. And then the camp cleanup efforts we had, we just had a fire down by one of them. Are those grant-funded, or can we do those on a regular basis? How do we pursue those operations?
We do them on a regular basis, and anytime we receive information from the neighborhood that there's one of those camps in the neighborhood, then we go down and take a look and provide the posting, give them 48 hours' notice to vacate, and then go in and clean it up, and we bear the cost.
Okay, so if a citizen asks about a certain area, and I do get asked about that from time to time, we can then contact your department, and you guys can schedule that on an operation?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then the last thing is on the -- with the community policing effort, obviously, the things like CSO and SNAPs are going to be important multipliers for you guys. Is that fair to say in terms of your --
Absolutely. That's another component, another layer of that problem-solving effort, and they're absolutely integral to that philosophy.
Yeah. Have you detected kind of an uptick in the outdoor population as of late? It seems anecdotal. I've heard of and seen more activity out there. I don't know if that's something that has been observable by your department, or?
Well, my sense, personally, I don't have the tremendous history, but I have noticed over the last couple of months an increased population. I would anticipate with a nice, warm summer coming, we're going to see a seasonal fluctuation. So yes, we're anticipating that.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Hart?
I'm really interested in knowing, you know, your fresh perspective. One of the most striking things in terms of policing in the community over the past four years has been the decline in youth and gang violence, from really dangerous levels to much more modest levels. I'm just curious what your sense of that is. You know, obviously, I haven't been here a long time, but, you know, is that part of a national trend? Is that the result of intervention programs? Is that a result of, you know, policing strategies? What would you -- how would you characterize that?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Hart, this is a -- is something that is unique, community to community. There are some communities who put tremendous emphasis on suppression, and it depends on the level of activity, and that is a key component. There are others who put significant emphasis on prevention intervention strategies, and I personally, professionally, believe that that is key as well. And what we're experiencing here, so my look at the gang issues here is the organization and the community has never really allowed it to get a foothold to where we went to the heavy suppression component. And so now with a blend of the suppression efforts, engaging other resources to kind of keep an eye on these folks, and then the different enforcement strategies that we use, but then also a heavy emphasis on prevention intervention, again, to allow them ways to steer clear, get out of the life, and go and get an education, do something else that isn't going to land you in the morgue or in prison.
It seems like over a very long period of time, there's a cycle to it, and it seems like there's incredible engagement, resources aimed at all of the things you talked about. The problem goes down, and then there's naturally less emphasis on that. And I think we're at that stage where it has declined, and just I think what I heard from your presentation is that you're not reducing the effort. You're continuing that intervention and collaboration with the other law enforcement agencies, you know, at this point in time when it's less intensive a problem in order to keep it from looming again. Is that fair to say?
That's correct. If you view this as one of those seasonal or cyclic issues, the ebb and flow, and you adjust resources accordingly, what you find is this particular criminality, it will adjust. And when the community pulls back, then you will see an increase because there's a sense of an ability to function. And so what we have done is we've done some reassigning within the organization to enhance that intelligence gathering and investigation and keep the pressure on, if you will, not in this heavy-handed sense, but to just keep an eye on these folks, the ones who we know who are active gang members, that you don't get to go out and do what you do. We're going to keep an eye on you through probation checks, and every time you stick your head out, one of us is going to be there, but then also provide those opportunities for those who see this, don't necessarily want to be a part of it anymore, and then can get out. So you have to keep the pressure on, and I don't know -- I don't know that we could ever really fully solve it, but at least those who continue to be engaged, we can be there to be -- they just don't get to do it.
Well, that's very encouraging, because I think that is something, you know, that's really important, and we're enjoying the results of the better effort and want to sustain that as long as we can, so I appreciate that. And then the other thing you mentioned was an increased emphasis on traffic safety, and I think that's another thing that has a cyclical nature, and I suspect that it's related to the fact that we've had so many vacancies in the department, just had to do triage and focused officers on active criminal cases and things as opposed to traffic safety. I don't know if that's a fair characterization, but if it is, having the officers coming back, putting in the grant applications, going after that in a more aggressive way, because, you know, anecdotally, from citizens I do hear, drivers have gotten used to there not being as much enforcement and are doing more and more dangerous things all the time, running red lights, you know, cell phones, all the kinds of things, and I just want to be able to tell them, we're getting to get back after that in a significant way.
That is in the top three priorities in the organization. Yeah, you don't have to -- it doesn't take long to -- between pedestrian safety, bicycle safety, and the motoring public, we really need to put some key emphasis on there. A lot of it, we want to focus on education efforts, but unfortunately, and there's a great study out of Northwestern University, enforcement is a key component to reducing collisions and enhancing traffic safety. And we hate to result to be the hammer, but sometimes that's just how you get people's attention.
And then just one little detail thing. On page D83 of the P3 objectives, one thing that sort of jumped at me was the change in telephone and email contacts. It's under there, under other program measures, you know, that was 1472 in '16 and then projected to be 5925, and now back to, you know, it looks like 1800. So I just wondered what that was about.
Sergeant Harwood, and unfortunately, he's not here, I'm going to --
That's fine. You can get to me off.
With social -- and I can, with social media and a more -- with the community policing philosophy, more engagement of the community, there's going to be more contact, whether it be via telephone, email, social media contacts, and that, when you see those, and usually an increase in calls for service is a good indicator that you've actually made an engagement with the community because they're contacting us more often. There's not this sense of, well, I don't want to bother the police, they're busy. We need the community to contact us.
Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I hope you're not tired, Chief, of people saying nice things about you, because that's how I'm going to start. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for being at the restorative justice all-day seminar, and it really meant a lot to the community of people who are trying to divert, young people especially, from the criminal justice system into different programs for rehabilitation or community service. So thank you for being there. You and, is Captain Altavilla with her?
Yes.
He's a captain, right? Okay. And then also, I know you've been attending the probation department-organized Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, and the AB-109 regular meetings, which are countywide. And I know that our police department wasn't always represented there. So thank you so much, because that means a lot in terms of this bigger picture that Councilmember Hart was asking, why is gang activity down? And then when you get the regional picture, it's really helpful. So I appreciate that. I wanted to ask about grant, who writes your grant proposals? Because it, I mean, obviously, you're doing a good job with it. I'm just wondering how your department does that.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Maria, we kind of go around the organization and look and see who maybe happens to be sitting there looking not busy at that moment.
Oh, my goodness.
And however, I've reached out to a couple of grant writers who I have a history with, who have a tremendous record of success, and have engaged them. And so they are on deck for, as we see these grant-funded opportunities. And they're not inexpensive. It may cost $10,000 to $15,000 per writing. However, the prospect and the potential of receiving, you know, a half to three-quarters of a million dollars to fund an effort, it's, you know, really an investment, it's money well-spent. So these people are on deck for us as these opportunities come forward.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, like the CalGrip grant, which is a regional grant, we used resources from the city administrator's office as well to work with the police department to put that grant application together. So it's a team effort. We look at the different grants and different opportunities and go for it.
Well, in the nonprofit world, there's actually someone designated as the development director, and so we want as much grant funding as we can get, right? So if you have it in hand, great. But I do encourage, I encourage us spending money on that if it creates a revenue, a better revenue stream for you. And then things that people have been telling me that they want in the community, the restorative policing officers, I think we only have one sworn right now in the program. I'm hoping that when we're fully staffed again, that we can get that second person. It means a lot to the downtown, and it addresses our street people, challenges all over the city. So the waterfront, and Milbus, and so, thank you. I'm hoping that. And then, I'm not sure if there's a police officer at Santa Barbara High School, and that was a huge issue, I think, in the last funding cycle. The school people were here. And I'm assuming that the other high schools, because they're in county territory, that they're staffed by the sheriff's department, is that right? So Santa Barbara High School is the only high school that we would provide an officer for? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And do you know if we have one now on the high school campus?
Yes. Yeah. Officer Adrian Gutierrez is the youth services officer there.
Oh, okay. Well, he's busy, huh? I see, I see him all over the place. I've heard complaints, and now turning my attention to animal services, and I think maybe others have heard this, that our, the city has a special space in the county animal shelter for dogs impounded. I think they're mostly dogs, right, related to city business? And that the kennels are not of the proper size, and that the animals don't get exercise, I think maybe because they've been biting. But the volunteers I hear make a relationship with the dog, and they want to walk them. So I just, I'm just telling you what I've been hearing, and I'm not even sure how to start a conversation like that. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Maria, my name is Lieutenant Aaron Baker. Actually oversee the animal control part of our police department. I've done so for about a year. I'm aware of those concerns. If I could address the issue about the size, I've actually personally been out to the shelter, which is run by the county, and observed the space that they provide for us. They do provide the amount of space that we need, not a designated space, but whatever we need, they're able to provide for us. In regards to the exercise of the animals, those ones that the people are complaining to you about really are related to the animals that have been deemed vicious or dangerous. And for liability reasons, we've decided that we don't want to put a volunteer in that position to be placed in harm's way. Paid members of the county shelter staff have access to those animals to provide the needs for those animals when appropriate. But it is a county-run program, and we allow them to run their program.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I will keep an eye on it. You know, those animals are under city care, and so when someone comes to me and asks about it, I really have to pursue it.
Yes.
Sergeant Baker?
Lieutenant Baker.
Lieutenant Baker, thank you.
You're welcome.
I've also heard that the dispatch needs more space, and I see the fire chief back there. So that's a fire and police thing, right? The dispatch center. So I took some candy there for telecommunications center workers' day or something. See's candy makes everything better. And they told me very nicely that they don't have a break room, and, you know, I just said, "What's going on here?" And it looked a little cramped, so I'm passing that along to all of us, that certainly that's a very difficult job. And I think there are long shifts, right? Is it 10 hours? Wow, okay. And then they're taking emergency calls. And so I'm hoping, Mr. Casey, that, just to make you aware, that the dispatchers are cramped. And I did see something in the binder, the budget binder, that you will be remodeling or changing their cubicle, their workstations on the turf, yeah.
The facility itself was just recently remodeled. It's really brand-new, state-of-the-art. And there, it's not optimum, I agree. There are some downsides. The break room is a distance away, unfortunately. The staffing doesn't allow them to take the break, so they kind of have to do so within the confines of the center. It's something that, you know, we are acutely aware, really, none of the facilities are optimal. We're just working within what we have. So it's definitely on the radar.
Okay. And then you've been to some of the Milbus Action Task Force meetings. Thank you for that, too, right? And one of the things that we're talking about there is an alcohol sales ordinance, which is something that Ariel Collin did in the city of Ventura. And I think that it charges fees, if I'm right, Mr. Collin, that enough fees that would fund a police officer, at least part-time, to work with the ABC. So I did want to let you know that. We're pursuing that. We have support from the homeless service providers, right? Because if you control, it's to control alcohol purchase and consumption of people who do binge drinking. We have support from our youth council, because teens will binge on that high-octane alcohol, yuck. But, so I'm getting into your business a little bit. I just wanted to let you know that we would be seeking the police department's support for control of that kind of, and I hate to say it, I think sometimes drunk people are able to purchase alcohol, too. I think that's part of the control focus.
Well, you wouldn't have to seek far to get the police department's support on that. In my former life, we had an alcohol compliance officer who was funded through fees that were paid by alcohol beverage licensees.
Yes.
And we were extremely effective in terms of routine and frequent inspections to ensure that they were complying with the conditions of their license, and were able to have a significant impact on over-serving intoxicated folks and the sales of alcohol to minors. All of those issues that we currently deal with can be corralled in, if you will, with some frequent compliance inspections.
And so there was enough funding for a full-time officer on that, in your experience?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I think right now, the discussion is just who, not bars and nightclubs, although I think some of the ordinances do cover that. I think we're just talking about the many liquor stores that are in our community. And then I'll close, I think, on a happy note about, I will be contacting the department more about Neighborhood Watch. So my district is, has issues of poverty and density, and people do want to take care of their own neighborhood. So I think we're looking at little mini Neighborhood Watches, you know, just sort of a couple of blocks. And I'm not sure if you recommend something larger, but there are sort of micro-communities within the larger district, so.
Another interesting study out of the University of Irvine talks about resilient neighborhoods, and the Neighborhood Watch is a significant component of that. So regardless of socioeconomic status of the neighborhood, we often find, again in my prior experience, that some of those more working-class neighborhoods were more cohesive in terms of looking out for one another, and had a significant result in reducing crime and disruption in those neighborhoods. So absolutely, we're, as it's one of our key initiatives, is to enhance those Neighborhood Watch programs, and so we would welcome any offer of involvement you want.
Thank you. And thank you for your leadership during this transition period. Thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
Before I start, I want to ask Mr. Casey, on an update for our new chief, only because I want to know how much I can gush on you today versus how much I'll have to save to see if you're coming back to council before...
Fair enough. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, recruitment is going very well. I'm very pleased with the recruitment. We had 91 applications, and it was a strong application pool. So I was pleased with the outreach that we did. We narrowed that down to six candidates that we then interviewed with a couple of community panels. I was very pleased with that process and the community involvement that occurred there. I'm in the final process of making a decision that I will be bringing back to you all probably in the next three to eight weeks or so. Hiring a police chief is a little bit different in that you have to go through a background investigation, and they also are required to pass a physical and psychological exam. And so that takes a little bit longer to kind of have that component completed. And I don't want to announce a decision until I get all my information from those analyses. So it's going very well, getting close. My hope and estimation is that I could make an announcement by the middle of June, and then realistically, it'd probably take a month before someone would transition in.
Okay. So we will have more opportunities for gushing, so I'll keep it to a minimum. But since I started here, I'm a new council member up here, and I think you were the only person to come in after me in terms of our team, the city team, so it was nice to actually not be the newest person anymore. But you came in with a huge body of substantive knowledge, and you hit the ground running. And I kind of liken it to when I was a substitute teacher. I came in and I said, "Where's the lesson plans?" And the administration said, "Well, we don't expect you to actually teach. You're just here to make sure no one gets hurt." But you came in actually expecting to teach, and you brought in some great leadership examples, particularly with Ortega Park. I'm really happy with the progress there. And like Councilmember Maria said, you've been everywhere. I think there must be a clone or two of you out there, the Milbus Action Task Force, you came in and immediately understood the issues and made some great comments. Also with the Safety Committee of the Downtown Business Association. And even the Spanish-speaking Citizens Academy, you were there. And I would have been completely floored if you just broke out with some Spanish, so...
Madam Mayor, Councilman Dominguez, I would not insult such a romantic language by trying to do that. But I do have a bit in me, but I just thought I would reserve it maybe for this evening.
Okay.
So, so great work, and I'm really impressed. One thing we talked about, you and I and Paul Casey, was about a grant for community relations, and you guys were both optimistic that there's going to be money through the state, so hopefully that's something we can add. Because I think we have one grant you've listed for efforts in traffic safety, but if we can add that in there, that would be great. I think it fits in well with some of the performance measures under community and media One little thing, the, it doesn't seem like the objectives have been updated for 2017 on the left side. Like for the Citizens Academies, it says Host 3, but then we have Proposed for 2017, too. So I'm not sure if the brown column needs to be updated or the green, but maybe that's something that we can take a look at. There's just, there's two or three of those that snuck in. But other than that, great job, and I'm really happy that you're here.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The freeway corridor, both sides, is pretty much the home for a lot of encampments. And the way we do it right now, we wait for a complaint, we go out, which seems to me backwards. Is there any way to institute a, an ongoing sweep, if I can put it that way, so that it doesn't become a problem? In fact, the word gets out, we can't stay there anymore.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Hotchkiss, this was, there was just a coverage on key news from, along Ariaga, along the freeway, there was a significant camp there. And this was the result of observations made by our team that keeps an eye on that. So we don't wait for the complaint. If we see it, then we act on it. And so it's a discussion we've had that we need to be proactive, and when we see these things, go in, notice them, and they got to move on, and then we're going to come in and clean it up. So we're in complete agreement.
So, I mean, I would even like to see it scheduled that we do a sweep every week, because almost anyplace you go, if you start looking in the bushes, there's something back there. And you don't have to wait for a complaint. So I don't know if it can be, we can be more aggressive there, but it sure would be good if the word got out on the street that Santa Barbara's not a place where you can camp out anymore along the freeway. Because I think right now, the word is, "Oh, yeah, well, try over by Oak Park, or Ariaga, or Cottage Grove, or wherever." That's not what we want.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I certainly third the compliments that are being heaped on you, Chief, for your work. It's been, it's being a really great transition. Transitions aren't easy, and you're making it a good one, so thank you for that. Okay, so I'll go back to a comment that you made in a previous presentation to see where that is fitting in. And that is, you mentioned you thought there were some opportunities to hire or utilize non-safety staff in some spots where safety staff is now working. Could you describe that as far as what, where you see that at this point? And I appreciate, as a transition person, not going to try and turn a department upside down, but you made that observation, so I'd appreciate hearing your feedback on that.
Yes. Madam Mayor, Councilman White, the city administrator granted me tremendous latitude, but would not allow me to paint the walls. So while we have discussed some of those changes, I believe those will be issues for the new chief. In my experience, I am a fan of civilianizing as much as possible in the organization. Police officers are expensive, and they should be doing what police people should be doing. And so there is tremendous opportunity here, particularly with the CSO program, not just on State Street, but throughout the entire service to the city, in terms of what we do in the beats, in those larger geographic areas. There's a level of service that they can perform, and it's going to have to be more of an analysis by the new chief to discuss that with city leadership and see how that fits in. We're not supplanting police officers. We're not going to take their positions away. But these are a lot of kind of perfunctory duties that, quite frankly, they'd rather not do anyway. And to go out and do more things that they can do and be more effective, and then have a less expensive alternative in someone in a civilian capacity to perform those duties, and oftentimes, provide an enhanced level of service. So there's great capacity.
Great. Well, that's good to hear. Thank you. And that, certainly, one of the things is, just as an overall comment about this budget today, what was it, two years ago, Mr. Rouse, when the, when this CSO, no, it was more than that, probably now, three, four, where the CSO is a one-shot, one, we're going to put some money in for one time? And we're not even talking about that anymore. You know, it's so successful that it's baked, it's obviously baked in, and that's a heartening thing. I appreciated the comments that Ms. Maria was, and the exploration that she made about the alcohol fees and also land use... the alcohol fees and also land use component to that, as I understand. Again, in conversation with Mr. Cullin, that's something that's happened in Ventura. I'm wondering if there's opportunity today to just, to have councils schedule this for a discussion in, obviously, in the course of business over this summer. So I'd make that motion, Madam Mayor, that we, that we, the council review, the, look at the ideas of both land use regulation and fee imposition around alcohol.
Okay, White and Rouse. Mr. Cullin, do you want to just maybe give a little more detail about what the process is and what's happened in Ventura?
Sure, and Ventura followed Oakland and Los Angeles. The state law relating to alcohol permits defers to local zoning. In our case, the ABC contacts the Police Department for determination about overconcentration of licenses and land use propriety. Many cities have shifted the land use decision to a planning commissioner or council by saying that the only way we'll allow alcoholic beverage establishments, whether they are on sale or off sale, is with a conditional use permit. That allows the city to very specifically control not only where alcohol establishments happen, but that, more importantly, the conditions of operation. So in the case of Ventura, the city regulated and forbid in certain locations the sales of singles, which can contribute to inappropriate street behavior. They required, in some circumstances, that after a certain time of night, the coolers being locked to prevent theft of alcohol, which is surprisingly common. So there are a number of practical steps that the city could develop in conjunction with the advising counsel of police about how to direct stores and bars to manage their alcohol sales.
Great, thank you for that. Okay, well, we have a motion on the table, basically to agendize this item to a future council date. Any other comments on the motion? All in favor? Aye? That's unanimous? Okay. Anything else, Mr. White?
One last thing, and that is, on the salaries and benefits, this is slide 15. Can, Ms. Peterson, can you break that down into what portion, what portion of that is salaries and what portion is benefits?
I don't actually have that detail with me today.
Okay. Well, just perhaps we could, you could ship that to us online?
Yeah, I can provide you that. I'll follow up with you.
That's it, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Well, ditto around about how seamless this transition's been, and I know it's the full team coming together, and it's your leadership, but also everyone on board in the department allowing you to take that role. And so I think that's, that's been, it's a testament to the full department on how everything has worked very well. I had, I guess, one question and then a comment. Or maybe, Mr. Casey, you can answer this. What was the salary savings in the Police Department this past year around? I mean, because we, I know, I understand, we, in the budget, we have to allocate the full amount, and then based on vacancies and things, you haven't, you know, that goes into the variance, but what was that number?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, you know, we're just wrapping up this fiscal year, so we're not quite done. It's going to be a large number, because it was a bad year. It's going to be probably over a million dollars. That's going to fall back to the bottom line for the general fund. We're, quite frankly, expecting that to some extent to offset the decline in revenues. You know, you, you need some of that, and unfortunately, it's the Police Department that's contributing a good amount this fiscal year. We've also, though, used those salary savings to supplement some other one-time needs and expenditures within the department. So we've targeted more into the recruiting and marketing efforts, as well as some supplies and some other items.
Not the full million.
But not the full million, correct.
Right. No, that, and that's smart to do. I, and I would expect and hope that, that salary savings will be less, as we're, I know we're bringing, can you tell me the status of how many officers are in the academy, or what our recruitment status is right now?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have eight people currently in the Basic Academy. We just graduated four, and they're in field training. And we are currently interviewing lateral applicants. We've attracted a very, very good applicant pool from other police departments to people who want to come to Santa Barbara, so that's very encouraging. Also, people who have put themselves through a Basic Academy, we're in the process of interviewing those folks now. And so we have some good momentum on this recruiting and hiring process.
Great, good, that's good for an update. I also bring that up because I wanted to know the information, but also I, in hearing from the Finance Committee, you had some very tough decisions and recommendations about requests from outside agencies, and really narrowed it down tremendously for us to consider on the first of June. And I guess one thing to throw out there for us to consider on the first of June is, is there $25,000 within that salary savings in the Police Department budget to accommodate the request from the Coalition Against Gun Violence for the gun buyback program? I think that's a policy decision we don't have to determine today, but as opposed to new general fund money going into the budget or being taken out of other streets or other things, that might, it might fit for one-year time only, not an ongoing basis, but I just sort of throw that out there as something to think about as we go into the final deliberations on June 1st, because I know the recommendation from the Finance Committee was not to add to general fund expenditure for that particular item. So, so just a thought. And, and, but it's been, this is an excellent report. Any other comments before I? Okay. I also just want to acknowledge Deputy Chief Mannix, who's here today, and you're retiring. And I believe this may be your last meeting here in council chambers, and you've been here for thirty, 28 years. And I, in particular, appreciate, we, a couple of years ago, went to Little Rock for a meeting with the U.S. Conference of Mayors and Police Chiefs from throughout the country. It was to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the COPS program and talk about community policing. It was just after the incidents in Ferguson was happening, so to have that national conversation about police community and with the, with the general community and within cities and what the role of chiefs and mayors are, and the city in particular, that was a very worthwhile personal experience. But also, Chief, I really appreciated your leadership within the city of Santa Barbara in so many ways, and just want to acknowledge and thank you for your service. So thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I might, one parting comment, although I'll be back for more council meetings, is I wanted to comment on Chief Mannix as well, is I have my own right hand, but with Frank, I had a second right hand. And arriving into an organization that I knew very little about and didn't know the people or the lay of the land, Frank was just an incredible resource to me in terms of history lessons and how we got to where we are today. And without that, I wouldn't have had a fraction of the degree of success organizationally. And so I really want to thank him publicly for that. We've had several conversations on a personal level. Sorry to see him go, but, you know, it's, retirement is a very personal decision. Also, on, and I do appreciate, and I'm very humbled by the comments from all of you, I want to just, a very quick story, and it's a Yogi Berra story. Someone once asked, once asked him, "What does it take to be a good manager?" And he said, "Well, that's easy. You just need a good ball club." And I was blessed to come into one of the best ball clubs that exist in the business. And the men and women of this organization really stepped up in this transition period and demonstrated who they are as professionals and as a team to demonstrate to you and this, and the city, and the community, as to what they're made of. And so it was an honor to be part of this team, and maybe I created an environment, but they did the job. And so while I appreciate your comments, it's, it's really on the organization, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good? You want to just move on over? All right. It's for Fire and Police, so. Do you, did you want to speak now, or did you want to wait till after the Fire Department? Sure, sure, come on up. Janine Daniel, and thank you for your service on the commission.
Oh, good morning, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Janine Daniel, and for the last 10 months, I've served on the Fire and Police Commission. I'm also the liaison with the Fire Department. During this time, I have observed how the Fire and Police Departments work so very closely together and support one another. I think this is a very important point, and our community is blessed by this. I'm extremely impressed by their clear and relentless objective to serve our community side by side, with exceptional professionalism, the highest of standards, accountability, dedication, respect, and camaraderie. I would like to thank you today for giving me the opportunity to serve on the commission and also to be able to serve our community. And thank you for hearing me now, because I'm parked in the 75-minute parking space, so I must dash.
You've got about four minutes left, so that's like, or six minutes left. Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. Okay, we'll move on to the Fire Department.
City Council, Pat Malroy, Fire Chief. We're here to give you an update on the second year of our two-year budget, the 2017 cycle. And I brought quite a few folks with me today, Joe Pore, our Fire Marshal, Ron Lickety, our Administrative Services Manager, Tony Pagetti from our Training Division, and Chris Braden and Ann Marks from our Wildland Division. And also, we're accompanied today by some students from the Bren School at UCSB, who are going to have a short presentation, our Wildland Benefit Assessment District, at the conclusion of our budget presentation. And I'm really, really happy with how that whole project went, and I think you'll find it very educational. First off, I want to give you a department presentation outline. We're going to do an overview of all funds, and Ron will handle that, as well as the proposed changes to the originally proposed fiscal plan, proposed fee changes, and then some key initiatives and performance objectives for the department in the upcoming year. And this would, want to give you a look at the department organizational chart. We're very happy to say that we are fully staffed. Last year at this time, we had, we're going through a really significant period of injuries. We also proposed our budget last year in the wake of the death of firefighter Dan Corrigan. So we had kind of a really rough start to the last, the last fiscal year. We had about 9,000 hours in injuries last year, which was a real dramatic change for us, and we seem to have gotten back on track. But we did hire a academy of 10 firefighters last year. They'll be completing their one-year probation the first couple of weeks of July, and we're very, very pleased with the group of people that we hired, and we expect great things for them long after most of the people at this table won't be here. But anyway, our department is organized into two main operate, divisions, operations, which, the Operations Division Chief is Lee Waldron, and he supervises the eight stations that we have, seven in the city and one out at the airport. And each of our stations is staffed with a captain and engineer and firefighter, with the exception of Station 1. And I'll get into that in a little more detail on the next slide. And then the other division is headed by Joe, and that's the Prevention Division. Our Emergency Services Manager, Yolanda McGlinchey, is there. But we also have the, like I said, the Wildland Division, and then our inspectors also work under Joe. So the eight fire stations, we have 29 assigned positions, 24/7, 365 days a year. So, for example, on duty today, we have one battalion chief, three seven-person engine crews at seven stations, and that's the standard configuration of a captain, firefighter, and an engineer. At Station 8 at the airport, we have a three-person ARF crew, and because of the nature of that response, you have a captain and two engineers, one for each crash truck. And at Station 1, we, in addition, we have a four-person squad, truck, and rescue. And that's a cross-staffing situation. We have the rescue downtown, which is a smaller vehicle, you'll see responding to a lot of medical emergencies downtown. And then we have the ladder truck, and then our heavy rescue, which is a heavy rescuer squad. So depending on the call, the two-person rescue will, will go out and handle medical emergency calls, but when we have a major incident, a large traffic accident, any, any type of fire, hazardous materials response, they respond as one crew on one vehicle. So it is, it's, we would, you know, logically, you would prefer to have those crews separate, but it's, it's just the way that our department has operated for years, and it works for us. And it gives us a flexibility of having a smaller, lighter vehicle going to the major, the large amount of medical emergencies we have downtown in the State Street corridor. So having that light vehicle, it gives us greater flexibility. And at this point, I'll turn it over to our Administrative Services Manager, Ron Lickety.
Morning, Madam Mayor, council members. Ron Lickety, Administrative Services Manager for the Fire Department. I'm pleased to be here to present the Fire Department's Fiscal Year '17 Proposed Recommended Budget. This first slide is just an overview of our three funds that comprise our department and the relative size of them. Our General Fund, of course, is our major fund. The total budget we're recommending for the department is $25.6 million, and the General Fund is $25.3 million, so the vast majority. Smaller in scope and scale are two other funds, are the Wildland Suppression Fund and the Fire Equipment Fund. The General Fund, looking just at the $25.3 million, we have seven programs in the General Fund, and this chart just displays the relative size of each program in terms of dollars for the General Fund. We have 105 full-time equivalent employees, 105 employees. If we combine our operations and airport rescue, which is our firefighters at the stations, that represents about 89% of our budget, and there's 89 sworn firefighters and sworn personnel consistent in there as well. And we're going to take a look at the changes to the adopted plan from Fiscal Year '17. First, we'll look at the General Fund. This, the very far right column, the Fiscal Year 2017 Recommended, that's our General Fund $25.3 million budget that we're recommending. The first column is, on the left, Fiscal Year '16 Projected. That is how we're anticipating ending this fiscal year with actual dollars at $25.5 million. Then the second column, the Fiscal Year 2017 Original Plan, is what was approved and adopted last year as part of the two-year budget cycle. We're in the second year of that two-year plan. And so we do have a few adjustments, the shaded column, the third column, to that original plan, yielding the Fiscal Year 2017 Recommended Plan. So I want to talk a bit about that shaded area, just what those changes are. And so the first one you can see are salaries and benefits, and that's actually reduced about $156,000. And this is merely just a refresh of the payroll forecast that was originally created two years ago with the two-year plan. And so over that time, there's been some adjustments for, adjustments for people that have changed their benefits, for step increases, for underlying assumptions in the payroll forecast. And we get that number pretty much provided by Finance and the budget team there. Moving on to the second row, Supplies and Services, there's a $55,000 decrease, and that decrease is a result primarily of a change in Public Works. You heard earlier this week, I think in their presentation, that they create a new Energy Efficiency Fund. And so we run eight fire stations, and we have electric and gas bills, just like a regular residence running those stations, and we're paying electric and gas bills. And now, they have been being paid directly out of our budget, and now they're going to be paid from the Public Works. So they are now handling centralized all of our energy needs there, and so our budget is therefore reduced. But then, on this third line, Allocated Costs, you see there is a slight, there's an increase of $145,000. That's us paying the Public Works for those energy costs. There was also some other, I think you know, allocated costs are services provided to the Fire Department by other departments in the city, such as the Attorney's Office, the Administrator, Public Works for their building, Fleet Management for our vehicles, and Communications and Information Services. So those have increased, doing, largely... So those have increased, doing a large part to the energy efficiency fund, but there've also been increases in our GIS system. There's been some increases in, that we're getting charged for communications and vehicle This slide, then, we have revenues in the fire department general fund. Again, this is the general fund, the same format of the slide. We're recommending the far-right column of 2017 budget. We are looking at the far-left column, how we're expecting to end this fiscal year, 2016, in a month. The second column is our original plan that was adopted two years ago, and our adjustments to that plan yielding, again, the final left, right-hand column of the recommended 2017 budget. And the main number I'd like to bring out here in the shaded column is the second row, mutual aid. You know, we provide fire assistance to other jurisdictions when there's a fire out of town, and we reimburse for our cost for that when we send our personnel and equipment out. And this, this year, fiscal year 16, we had a $423,000 budget, and we're actually coming in at over a million dollars. And so we've run a history, and the trend of this account has been, over the last 10 years, we've actually earned, average, about $900,000 a year. So we think it's recommended, justified to increase that mutual aid revenue slightly this year to account for recent trends. As I mentioned earlier, there's two other funds. This is our wildland fire suppression fund, and we're making really no, very minimal changes here, just some reforecast estimates on salaries and payroll. And our final fund is our fire equipment replacement fund. And this fund was established in fiscal year 2015, and it was to save funds up for large equipment purchases that the fire department needs, such as self-contained breathing apparatus, defibrillators, air compressors, radios, large purchases of that nature. And we're currently funding that at about almost $50,000 a year, and continue to do that in the near future. Yes?
Press.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Lickety, that, that kind of drew my attention from one of the first slides was, seems like a very small number for a lot of very expensive pieces of equipment. So how do you actually afford to do things like breathing apparatuses and turnout gear and all those things? Because clearly, that's not going to go very far.
Madam Mayor, council member, if I could step in on this one. This is something that we just started last year, the year, last year, the year before. And what it, what we're trying to do is address a way of funding for our department for large equipments over a period of time, kind of based on how our fleet purchases were done. Because we've been, for large equipment purchases like that, we've been very successful due to Ron's work over the past few years. I think we've brought in about a million and a, million three in, in the grants for breathing apparatus, for turnouts, for radios. So we've been really successful in that, but we, we don't know how much of that money will still be available. In, in years past, they became part of the capital, capital improvement projects. And so if we figured if we could get a, a fund going using revenue from mutual aid, some of the mutual aid money that we get back, we could, we could take the load off the capital program, and if grants dry up, we could, we could, we could use this fund. We did have last year a big staffing crisis where we had to hire and run a large academy. So some of that money was moved, some money we had in here was moved out of there on a one-time basis. But we feel that this is going to be a, a successful program, and I think moving forward, I think you're going to see this number grow through the mutual aid revenues.
We're looking, moving on, we're looking at our, a change to our proposed fees. Fire department had, fee schedule is broken into eight categories with over 80 different fees. And to maintain, costs have increased, so we're recommending across the board a 1.6% consumer price index increase to our fee schedule, rounded to the nearest dollar. I mentioned that most, our most popular fees are not affected, and there's no increase to the general public. And let me show you that on this slide as some examples. So, well, if we look at the, the first row, apartments and hotels, three to nine units, a quarter hour, engine company fire inspection, you can see that we're currently charging $27 when we apply that 1.6% increase. We're still only charging $27 because it does not round up to the nearest whole dollar. And it was the last increase in 2015, and we expect maybe it might increase in 2018, depending. But that line, and say the one below, building plan checks, initial review, $27, same idea. And if we look at, if, we charged about 1,400 fees thus far this year, 1,400 separate transactions, and 1,000 of those fell into the categories of $24 and $27 fees. So that's the majority of fees that we charge, and they're not increasing. But we have 80 other fees, and they are increasing, you can see, by a few dollars per that increase. And then move into our different performance work objectives and some key objectives we're looking at performing this year. And I'm going to hand the DS back to Captain, or Chief McElroy.
We have three areas we really want to focus on today in terms of some things that we've been working on. Two are new, and one is kind of an ongoing, and that's the live-fire burn prop. But one of the things we're looking at is upgrading our mobile data computers. We went to this mobile ability in 2008, and it was supposed to be a five-year lifespan on these. They've gone for an additional four years. And that was not done accidentally. It wasn't done by not paying attention. We've really been working with police IT and city IS. Captain Pitney, who isn't here today, has been real instrumental in this. And we knew we wanted to go to a newer system and a tablet-based system, but we, we wanted to make sure we had the right one. We didn't want to throw the money away on a system that hadn't been vetted properly. So as long as we could get by with the, with the equipment that we had, we kept, we kept that equipment in place. But we feel really confident about where we're going in this, in this area. We did, we're successful in getting a grant through the county for 19 of these Panasonic tablets you see right there. But what this allows us to do is have mapping, pre-panning, electronic patient care reporting, all the information from dispatch. We can have our, run our records management system from inside the vehicles now, and the communications will be secure. Each of our vehicles will be enabled, and they, I believe they, that program's completed now too, right? With all of the, yeah, completing it this year. So each one of our vehicles will be its own mobile Wi-Fi hotspot. So no matter where they go on mutual aid, up in our, up in our canyons in our front country, we're going to be able to get access, and we'll be able to share information with the units in the field, and then it's well back to us. So it's a real advance for us, and we're very, very pleased with this, with this program. And I really want to mention that Dennis Diaz and Rob Badger from both the city and PDIT have been really helpful with, with us in this program. We've also reached a really enhanced level of cooperation with the police department, IT department, and we're really pleased about that. And I think we'll be seeing more of that in the future. And we really have, while I've got the, the mic right here, we really have also seen an enhanced cooperation at the combined communication center. Yeah, I think the fire department bears some responsibility for not stepping up and having a bigger footprint over in the dispatch center, and we're really trying to do that now. And thanks to Chief Cromback, we're being very successful in that area, and you're going to see a bigger role for the fire department in the dispatch center. One of the things that we also found as we were doing this, and taking the time to make this thing work, work correctly and not rush into untested technology, we did, ran a pilot program, and the initial fitting out of these two engines was about $10,000 per vehicle. And by working on this thing, looking at the systems, putting a lot of time into doing research, we reduced that fee by about 80%. So it's about $1,800 now per vehicle. And so this is going to be, I think, a really good program. It's taking advantage of the technology that's available, and a lot of the work that other departments are doing in terms of GIS to the city will now be available to firefighters in the field. And that's, it enhances safety, it enhances effectiveness, and, and like I said, it's something we're very, very happy with. The second thing that we wanted, and I might bring Captain Pagetti up here for a moment. This is something we brought to you over the, the past year, and this is our new live-fire training burn prop down at our, our tower. And we have two of these in place now. The one, the initial one, the phase one, is much smaller. But we, what we really like about this is that multiple agencies cooperate and contribute to this, Santa Barbara County Fire Department and their union, the Santa Barbara City firefighters, and, and as well as the department, through what's called the JAC, JAC funds, which are administered by the state fire marshal's office, and that's a joint apprenticeship committee. So it's money that we get for educational equivalency from the state by the training that we do for our firefighters, we're reimbursed by the state, and that, we get these funds that can only be used by, by, for training. So the county contributed money to this, Montecito Fire Protection contributed money, as well as our city firefighters, and we received a very substantial grant from the Craig and Susan McCaw Foundation to make this all happen. So we're very, very proud of how this all came together. And I really wanted to mention Brad Cleansing and the group over from Public Works and Facilities that helped us out with this. It was a really cooperative team effort in getting this going. And we have a few, a couple short video clips I want to show you of what it actually looks like in, in, in the tower. So, Tony?
Madam Mayor, council members, Mr. Casey. First, this was a great project as a training captain for the, for the city fire. This was probably one of the most exciting things we've done in the, probably the last five, six years. This is something that we need to do. It's an annual requirement that we put our firefighters into live-fire. And to be able to do this on our home property, under our control, is, it's been super valuable. We have already been successful in running 88 of our members through the phase one prop, which I think we're going to show a little video of. We came out of that with zero injuries and zero equipment failure, which, when you see it, it's, it's amazing, but that's the control we have over this. Go ahead. So the one thing that we can do with this prop is, as you can see, this is when a fire just began. So because of fuel loads, time of day, response times, we never really know when we're going to open a door and see the fire. So for our folk, our members to see what the fire looks like from the very beginning to the point where it becomes a dangerous situation, it's a valuable picture for them to see. And as you watch the flame, the smoke is, the only thing that's on fire in there is a, is a barrel of plywood and some pallets. What you see blowing out across the top of them is actually smoke. The smoke becomes so hot and so concentrated, it flashes over. And it'll flash over at over 1,200 degrees. What we're doing in, in this prop here is they're sitting three feet below the fire floor, so they're safe. They're, they're probably sitting in 300 degrees. If they were at the level of the fire floor, just three feet above them, they'd have about 17 seconds before they'd have catastrophic failure of their equipment and have second-degree burns even through their turnouts. So what we try to do is, ideally, we do not want to put ourselves in that situation. So what we're doing is we're training all the firefighters to recognize those, those symptoms prior to that happening. So when you open a door and you see the smoke doing a certain thing, or you see the smoke bank down below your knees, you know how to react to that. And you have two choices. You can either cool it down and, and attack, or you can figure that you're probably putting yourself in harm's way. It's, it's not a tenable situation or a rescue situation, and you're going to back out and hit it from the outside and to make it safe to make, to actually go inside, put the fire out. A couple of months ago, I came in, and FLIR had donated a K-55 thermal imaging camera with video capabilities. This is that camera. We were able to videotape that same flashover that you saw in the other video, and you can see the temperature went from 300 degrees to when it flashes over the top of their heads, it's well over 1,200 degrees. And then what we do is we show the technique of closing out the oxygen by closing the doors, putting a little bit of water on that. This is not sped up, this is real time. So it goes from 600 to 1,200 in a matter of seconds. And as soon as we cool it down, right here, you can see him squirt a little bit of water on there, it goes from 1,200 back down to under 400, which we can, we can actually work in 400-degree temperatures. So again, this is real time, this is real training. And we've then gone from phase one into the bigger prop that you saw, where we're actually putting fire on the fire ground, so they're going in at the same level of, of the fire, and they're actually doing fire attack. And the things that we've learned over the past few weeks by able to do this between communications and, and techniques and tactics, and it's, it's been just invaluable. So thank you for the, for pushing this. This was a three-year project. Chief McElroy was super patient. Brad Cleansing from the city project, he was a project manager, he never once faltered. He just said, and we just jumped through all the required hoops, and here we are. We're training, we're actually going to train tomorrow with Montecito, and we're doing our inside training on Saturday. So this is a very active prop, and we're going to save some injuries, some lives, and definitely hone our skills.
Next, one of the, one of the key things we're looking at for the, for the future is Fire Station Seven, which was originally built in 1951. If you look at the station, this station, Station Six on the Mesa, and Station Five on the West Side, we're basic same architectural plan. And we've, we've updated all of our stations. The one, the two exceptions really are Station Three on Solo Street, which has issues with the historical nature of the building, but we've modified that as, as much as we can. But at some point, we're going to have to address that. One of the things we're doing there in replacing apparatus is that the, it's difficult to find a fire engine that fits in that building. And so one of the things we're doing, we're keeping our frontline equipment in there. We have, we're able to modify the door to do that, but we're also adding what's called a Type 6 engine that will be arriving pretty soon that will go into the smaller bay over there. And that's part of a lighter, more efficient fleet, more versatile fleet that we're, we're looking for, and we've been working with Public Works and Fleet to update our fleet in that area. So this is a Station Seven in present day. One of the things that we've been looking at, as you can see over on the left, the, the United States Forest Service has a federal operation up there. So that was put in about 14 years ago. And as part of looking at this station and looking at a remodel, talking to Jim Dewey in Facilities, he suggested that we not look at a remodel so much as a rebuild. It's not really a fire-resistant building. It's in the highest fire area that we have in the, in the city. And we have a next picture here, this is the night of the T-fire. So these were reserves that had moved, moved up after the initial, initial engines had gone up. So one of the things, if you can move back to the previous one, Ron? In, in talking to the new Forest, Los Padres Forest Superintendent Bob Baird, who's really, really a great colleague to work with, we wanted to see what the possibility would be is moving forward with a permanent local and federal presence in Station Seven's district. So right now, we have a, we have some drawings being done. We took, we put out an RFP for possible architects and selected somebody, and they're looking at a variety of drawings, both on this site and also at the old Sheffield Reservoir Building. So we want to look at a variety of options. We, we think that this is a, a perfect example of the Forest Service's major national issue, and it's also, it's always been a historical issue here, which is the wildland urban interface. And it's also, it's always been a historical issue here, which is the wildland urban interface. The Forest Service is spending, I think they spent over almost a million, a billion and a half dollars in wildland firefighting last year. And I think that this, this particular area in the city of Santa Barbara, and I think the Bren School people will support this, it's a perfect example of how you can have a federal-local cooperative project. The US Forest goes right up to the city limits. We have a 100-year, well-documented history of wildfire in this area. And because of the Wildland Benefit Assessment District, the citizens in this area have taken responsibility and ownership for dealing with this problem. And I think for the Forest Service at the federal level, this would be a prime example that they could use as a teaching moment to go around the rest of the Western United States, and also the South now, where wildfires become a much bigger problem than historically has been, and say, this is how a local community should work with the feds to deal with the wildfire problem. And so we're hopeful that we'll have a project that will have some appeal, not only here, but in Washington as well, in terms of helping to fund a co-staffed facility. We're really excited about this. So I realize it's probably not going to happen while I'm here, but I think if we can get it, we can get it rolling, I think this is, this is really going to be a kind of one-of-a-kind station in the United States. And hopefully, we'll set a trend in how we can move forward in the future. And that really concludes our presentation. So if you have any questions, everybody here will be available.
Thank you. Any questions or comments at this point? Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for the presentation that is, that collaborative venture with the feds would be really exciting if that could go. We've talked over the last year a bit about a regional effort for defensible space. And I appreciate you giving us any update there that you have of that concept of are the various local agencies working on anything at this point that's attempting to expand that effort?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, nothing specific. The concept of defensible space, of course, is mandated by state law. And we're all, all agencies are required to apply it. Where we, you know, where we cooperate with local agencies, for instance, Santa Barbara County, or where we interface with, for instance, Mission Canyon and other areas that bump up against the city. And, and of course, when you have a defensible space problem that crosses property line, you have to deal with that property line issue separately. And you can't go onto somebody else's property to conduct your own defensible space. Of course, we have that problem within our city itself, because a lot of lots, you know, are small enough so that they don't accommodate that. So it requires a lot of neighbor cooperation, as well as inter-agency cooperation.
In addition, Councilmember White, as you talked about, we are looking into, there is some grant money through COME that we didn't realize was available. And I've talked to Chief Peterson about that as well. One of the challenges for, for the surrounding agencies that we have is, because of the state fee that they pay for fire through CAL FIRE, they're, the political ability of our surrounding agencies to get something going, like our Benefit Assessment District, is hampered by the fact that citizens say, I'm already paying this fee, and now you want to have me pay more. Because it doesn't necessarily go and direct fuel modification in their jurisdiction. And so I think that, again, referring to the Bren thing, I think you'll see the recommendations they have for other communities in California where this would be an effective program. But it is something we're talking about at the county chief, chief level. But as Joe said, we don't have anything moving right now. Every jurisdiction has their own program. But collaboratively, in terms of, let's say, for example, if we want to do a front country one from Gaviota to the county line, I think we'd be talking about monies on the scale of what you were talking about with the COME grant.
Sure. Well, and obviously with our immediate urban area, we've got at least three jurisdictions that are between county, Montecito, and Santa Barbara City, just for openers. That's, we have a band of danger and a band of opportunity there, which I would really love to see, just even talk about collaboration. Clearly, most of the work that we get done is a collaboration between the department and citizens. And just to broaden that effort around those three jurisdictions, so that we start to build a band, I mean, the band is now, each individual jurisdiction is making, doing the best we can. But I just, my gut feeling is that the more that we can collaborate and get all three, and Forest Service, I forgot to mention too, would be part of that. It's just, there's, there's a need, there's an opportunity. And I would hope that along the way, and as you say, if there, if there's grant opportunities that come along, all the better. But it's just, it seems to me that's, it's a, there's more opportunity there than we're quite exploiting at this point.
If I could say one more thing on that. And this, of course, just to separate the different types of activities that we do. In defensible space, of course, it applies to structures. Defensible space is that space between the vegetation and an individual structure. The other aspects of it are things like vegetation management, and I think that may have applied to what you were talking about. We still have the community fuels treatment network above the city, and some of it transitions into the city. That is a multi-jurisdictional area. And we have discussed in this next fiscal year of moving back into that area and redoing work that we did several years ago. That may be one of the areas of cooperation that we can talk about. Of course, that isn't defensible space, it's vegetation management. And that creates, that gets into the larger problem of, in vegetation management now, we are adhering to much more strict biologicals when we, when we go into an area to clear vegetation.
I certainly appreciate the challenges that come with that. And then we can talk about air pollution, and ours, trying to do control birds or pile burning even, as well as, that can slow us down. But I still believe that as a, as a region and as a, we lose opportunity, I think, when the, when the pros are doing the work and the citizens are not watching or participating and involving themselves. And so I think there's more, that's where I'm hoping we can expand the effort. And then you mentioned the difficulty with the state, what's it called? Is it SRA? Are those the?
Yes, RAs, yes.
Yeah. I mean, my gut feeling is that particularly on our east, and maybe all of that area, the upscale nature of the residences is such that, okay, they're paying their $70 a year per parcel. They know when they want better service, and there may be opportunities to even put a, put an assessment on top of that. I know those aren't our jurisdictions. We're doing, we're pulling our weight. But again, regional effort, more citizen involvement. I just, I hope for more in that area.
And we do agree with that. I think Ann Marks might have something to say here. I'll let her go ahead.
You think?
This is on Madam Mayor, Councilmember Bindi White. A few things that are going on in the front country in regards to cooperation with the other agencies. There are federal grants out there from the Forest Service and the kind of national programs that are available. But there's two projects also that are going on that affect our community. One of them that was completed this last, this last winter was a, essentially a vegetation management area above Mission Canyon that tied into what is the Hays-Sacita Fire and the T-fire areas and our community fuels treatment area. So Santa Barbara County Fire, we've been working in cooperation with that. And a big part of that is the city, because that is a lot of city water resource property. And so we've been working with city water resources to make that happen. And then the second project is Montecito Fire Protection District has just completed their Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And that plan does tie in with, again, that band above the city and tying in with the city to look at, how do we tie in defensible space, vegetation management, and that kind of protection area against that large chapparal, you know, that exists in that area? So there are efforts that are happening in that area. And, you know, a lot of that is the funding, and it is a lot of community support. Fire Safe Council continues to meet to kind of have that collaboration and work as a kind of community, business folks, fire agencies, and Red Cross, all of those agencies, to address things which include evacuation. So just wanted to give you that update.
Well, thank you for that. And the, the bigger noise that we can make with that, even though the, you know, the funds may not be there to do the, take on the tens of thousands of acres, but the more that we're showing our commitment to it in a public way and as a collaborative way, citizens to agencies, there, I think it becomes attractive to grants and to, okay, they're behind this effort, let's encourage them some more. And also, this is, Santa Barbara, this area is one of the most dangerous wildfire spots in the, in the country as far as loss of value and just in general. So let's, let's make as much noise as we can in that area to attract yet more, more grant funds.
And I know CAL FIRE is, their, their money that they get from their fee that is going into grant funding, Montecito and the county are definitely using that for their SRA areas. So thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've talked some specifics, but since the T-fire, what have we really learned? Did we learn to better communicate among agencies, for instance?
Mayor Schneider.
I think they had some frequency problems at one point or so.
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, we definitely learned a lot. The communication piece of the, of the fire problem, both agency-to-agency and fire agencies to the public, I think, has improved dramatically. Our ability to communicate with each other at the fire level has been really enhanced with some improvements in radio. We're doing a island, a island repeater, which can be on Santa Cruz Island, that will project, project into the front country and way up into the canyons. It'll give us a capability that we didn't have before, because a lot of times from canyon to canyon laterally, it was difficult to communicate. So with having that repeater coming across the water and up the canyons, it really enhances our capability. We've got.
Have we tested that?
Yeah, it's in, we're engaged in the project right now.
I see.
Okay, so that, that's really good. And also, our ability to communicate with the public, social, through social media, not waiting on a news cycle. We found that with the Gibraltar Fire. We had photos, video, and information out within minutes of the fire starting, and it continued through the whole duration of the fire. So the public was informed, was seeing what was going on. And one of the things that I thought was really interesting about that fire in terms of, while the fire didn't gain the scale that it was capable of, the threat was very obvious. And the community with the, you know, just the stature of Santa Barbara community and a wildfire, it was one of the few fires I've ever been on where we never had a press conference. We didn't, the news appetite was satisfied by the pushouts that we were doing, social media, which was getting picked up by standard media sources. So I found it to be a really successful thing, and we were, we got a lot of kudos from people in the media about that, that people felt informed right from the get-go. So that, on the level of communication between each other and the, and the public, I think it's better. And then also, what you're seeing with the in-vehicle capabilities we're having now with the tablets and the Wi-Fi hotspots, the communication we have with the people in the field, both what they're seeing out there and using cameras and cell phones and being able to send back into command headquarters, and also command, be able to communicate with people in the field, and also the ability we have now to say, we've got people coming in from San Francisco, or people coming up from Los Angeles to fire here, we're able to electronically transmit to them incident action plans, mapping, danger areas, where they're going to be deployed. So they have a chance to research that on their, on their way coming in.
And are we sharing frequencies with them? Is there a statewide coordination?
Absolutely. We have a massive frequency system we have in our, in our radios. So no matter where we go in the state, we, we can be assigned a frequency, and we can assign frequencies to people that are coming to us.
To add to Mr., or maybe, I think I'm adding to Mr. White's suggestions, if we had an additional wildland fire area that might, you know, people would have to approve it, what would we do with that? Would we intensify what we're doing now, or would there be additional things that we might be able to do? Is that too broad?
I'm not sure I'm understanding the question. If we, like, expanded the wildfire.
Yeah, either expanded it or made it greater. Right now, I think it's $90 a parcel a year. Go ahead.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think, you know, we put a lot of work on the front end of this, identifying the historical high-fire areas and extreme-fire areas. I think in terms of the geography of it, I think we're, we're okay. And I think when I look at the, and I hate to keep referring to these, the folks, but that's one of the reasons we had, we were interested in UCSB looking at this, is because we, we think it's a great program. And I, you know, we're just completing our first decade of it. I envision this after three or four decades, how effective it's going to be. And right now, I don't see a real necessity to raise the fees on this. And if, but when we look at it as the amount of tons of fuel cleared out, the amount of stuff that's been shipped, the roads that have been cleared, the miles, each year, it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger in terms of the people that are participating. So we're, we're really pleased with that. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, I think it does. I just wanted to be sure that down the line, if we have another fire, we didn't say to ourselves, God, if we'd only done this, you know?
We're, we're, the fact of the matter is, the type of fires we have here, the catastrophic nature of them, we're, we're doing the best we can to prepare for them. But there's going to be a fire, and houses are going to be lost in Santa Barbara. And that's just, that's just the historical fact and the nature of the fire problem we have here. But if we give people a better chance of survival for their home and work on how we evacuate people and how we, how we put the travel paths, travel paths for incoming engines and strike teams, which we have been working on continually, I think we just get a better outcome each time.
I guess we have to accept the fact that, as you say, there's going to be a fire, they're going to lose some houses. But we could, there are times when we could have lost the whole city. And that's, you know, you got to stop it up there and not at the ocean.
Yeah, that gives us, that gives us a, it definitely gives us a place to fight the fire from.
Yeah, we don't want the waterfront being part of the fire problem.
It's gone, as, as an operations chief, that picture went through my mind. And it's still up there in my rolodex, so it isn't something we really want to say, no.
Thanks.
Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to bring up an issue. I had a meeting last week with the county public health regarding a smoking ban in the city. So I wanted to find out how this would impact your department, and I should have brought it up earlier with the police department as well, but in terms of fires that might be caused by smoking, and then also emergency medical response, what is, what is the cost that either cardiac arrests that may be cigarette-smoking relating, or lung disorders or disease that accompany cigarette-smoking? Is that something that you feel would impact your department?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, in terms of fires, our main, our main link with cigarettes and fire starts is probably more in the nuisance end of things. Trashcan fires, occasionally something on the cigarette in the wharf, in the wooden pilings in the wharf. But as a, as a, as a main contributor to fire, it's not, it's not, certainly not as significant as it used to be. One of the things that helps with that is our smoke detector ordinance. So the ubiquitism of smoke detectors are catching a lot of those smoking-related fires in their incipient stages, rather than where they became full-blown fires, which it did used to historically involve a lot of fatalities. And in terms of the public health aspect of it, we'll, you know, we would support anything in terms of, you know, public health for the greater good of the community. But it's hard to quantify how that affects our costs for a department, because you, you look at any type of causal things that affect our medical response, and so many of them are lifestyle-related, whether it's diabetes, alcoholism, drug addiction, smoking. We respond to all of them, and I don't know where, where a fire department would fit in on the front end of the health choices. Does that make sense to you?
And you don't quantify, as you're in the field, why the person needed to call. You just help get them restored and the treatment they need. You just help get them restored and the treatment they need.
That, you know, that's it. It's, it's, it's actually come up in this 911 thing I've been working on, well, this person had died because of that, not because of you guys not being there. Well, we don't get to make those choices. You know, people call, we go, we deal with it, help them, and move them through whatever the next step in their process is, whether going in an ambulance to the hospital or whatever. But it's, we don't quantify, and have not been asked to quantify in that manner before.
Okay. And I thought it would be, it would be relative to the Police Department in terms of littering and some smaller, kind of, again, more nuisance-related things, enforcement of tobacco laws, sales to youth, I know has traditionally been a problem in Santa Barbara. And I also spoke with representatives of downtown Santa Barbara, and it seemed like they were concerned about it. I know there's about 40 cities in the state that have banned public smoking. Sonoma was talking about it this week, it's on their agenda. And if it's something that might reduce calls for service, either the medical side or the fireside, I think it would be a boon. I think most people my age or older have been touched by a loved one losing their life due to a smoking-related illness. I think the public health side benefit is really large. So, kind of along the lines of the earlier referral to staff, I'm wondering if we can, if there's support on council, if I can refer this either to the Administrator's Office to look at a ban. So, I'd throw that out there as a motion, if there's any support.
So, there's, Mr. Cullen?
Just briefly, Mayor, by way of information, the existing city's smoking ordinance dates back to the early '90s. It's what I would characterize as a first-generation smoking ordinance. There's been a lot of state law that's happened since then, and so the ordinance could use work.
That something you were planning on bringing forward in any case? Or do you need direction to do so?
I think there are policy issues in there, so I wasn't comfortable with bringing that forward on my ticket. So, if the council's willing, I think the work is worthwhile. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. I mean, well, let me just, so there's a motion to bring back to a future agenda, issues related to updating the city's smoking ordinance. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. I'm happy talking about it. I'm not quite sure how it connects with calls for service, to be honest with you, but I think there's a bigger other issues, and if it's an antiquated ordinance, then we should have that discussion. Any other, just on the motion, anything on the motion, Mrs. Marie?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. I know that there had been some talk about prohibiting smoking on our beaches. Mr. Casey, is it still true that we're the only coastal California city that allows smoking on our beaches?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, we were looking at this maybe two, three years ago or so. I think that was one. I think on the wharf, there's consideration as well. I think, as Mr. Cullen says, I think staff would be open to reexamining the smoking ordinance and look for opportunities there to update it.
Thank you. And then I would-
And my only, and my only other question, just, will have to be, it's just kind of a workload balance. You know, that's kind of two substantive efforts that you've thrown on our plate that was already pretty full. So, we'll have to balance that. I'm not speaking against it, because I agree that it might be something we want to look at. I just would want to lay out reasonable expectations from a timeliness about how we could bring that all back.
Just a point of order, is this within the purview of a police and fire budget discussion? I mean, we have a motion, I just wanted, what you have, go ahead, Mr. Cullen.
The Brown Act allows you to agendize for future consideration, anything you'd like.
Just want to make sure we're-
And, Madam Mayor, I guess I also wanted to add that we should check in with our visit Santa Barbara. I think people, our tourists, other cultures have a different relationship with tobacco. I think our Chinese visitors and European visitors smoke cigarettes, and I'm just saying, it should be part of the discussion if we're talking about controlling people's behavior. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so just a little tangent here, there's a motion, it was by Dominguez, second by White, to bring to a future council agenda, an item about updating the city's smoking ordinance, okay?
I have a discussion-
Yep, go ahead.
There have been communities, I know in the East Coast, that have banned smoking, and then four months later reversed it because it had such a dramatic effect on property values, tourism, everything. So, I caution the council not to be too puritanical here and aggressive. So, whatever we do in the future, keep in mind that there are people that do not hold such a negative view of tobacco, as may be prevalent here, including President of the United States.
Oh, you're quoting Obama. That's pretty amazing. Mark the date and time. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Anything else on the motion, Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'm fine going forward with this at some point, but way in the future, workload is huge right now for a lot of stuff, including what's coming up on Ordinance Committee. And frankly, this discussion, I think, is way out of bounds of where we are right now. So, I, I'm-
We'll work, we'll work on agenda timing, yeah, of that item. Okay, there's a motion, all in favor. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, 6-1, Hachikas opposed. Mr. Dominguez, were those all your comments? Okay, Mr. Hart?
Yeah, I just wanted to go right back quickly to the Wildland Fire Suppression Fund, and I think the other council questions illuminated a lot of my questions, but I'm still struggling with the scale of the effort that we're able to accomplish with the funding that we have through the Wildland Fire Suppression Fund, as opposed to the scale of the effort that our neighboring jurisdictions are able to do. And so, I just need to know kind of order of magnitude through the grants that they have, through the money that they have, is, are we, you know, twice as good, three times as good? Just to have a sense of, you know, the limitations that they have with the funding sources they have as compared to the funding ability we have with the funding source we have.
Yeah. Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, it's hard to quantify exactly how many times over, but we are one of the, I think actually, we're the last assessment district of our kind in the state. And it's, and we know of its effectiveness, that we're going to put on a presentation shortly that will demonstrate that. Of course, as times change, we have to change with it, and, you know, we're always reassessing the three prongs of our program, the defensible space advice, the chipping aspect, vegetation management, and road clearance. Road clearance has been right at the head of the class in the past few years, because, as you know, we did a study with DUDAC about our evacuation routes and, you know, and ways to improve our evacuations in, you know, in the event of a wildfire. So, we're always looking at the different aspects of it. And they may change somewhat, but what we're kind of locked into, what we told the taxpayers we were going to do in the first place when we proposed the tax, and it, so far, has been very, very effective.
Well, I guess, just to tease this one more time. So, you've got a map that shows the different districts that you rotate through on a time-schedule basis and are able to cover, and as time goes on, you're going to get more and more people participating in that. It's going to do even better and become incredibly powerful. The county and the Montecito Fire District don't have that tool. They have grants that they get whenever they get, and so they get to what they could do, and that makes sense. I understand all that. So, I'm just trying to understand how far apart this different funding models are going to get over time.
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, I think that the benefit of ours is it's predictable.
Right.
They're depending on grants, and we can look out and go, "This is where we want to be in 10 years." This is, this is, it's a systematic approach to the problem. And I think that, frankly, I think the efforts going on in all agencies are commendable, but I'm very proud of ours. I think it's kind of unique, like Joe says, and it's, I think the solid, steady funding stream that we have with the support of the citizens allows us to do long-range plan and, planning in a lot more effective manner than I think is capable when you're depending on an uncertain flow of grants. So, I would say, without being able to put a percentage number on it, I think that, as a fire chief, I'm very pleased that I have this tool to combat our problem.
Councilmember Hart, also, we're not without grants. The evacuation study that I was talking about with DUDAC was done with a grant. It wasn't done with assessment money funds, although it is looking at the assessment district. So, we do generate grants as well, you know, when the need arises. And, you know, so we're, we're not opposed to other funding sources, just because we have the assessment district. In addition to that, we also use general fund money in the assessment district. The only thing we're prohibited from doing is using assessment district money for general fund issues.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Okay, thanks, Madam Mayor. Would that all government agencies cooperate the way you guys do with your other fellow agencies? And to that point, oftentimes, you are the very first responders in situations, and your theme is not, "It's not my job." You guys always respond, which I appreciate. And I'm wondering, given, given what just happened, which was the year anniversary at the Refugio oil spill, and given that we did have personnel on the scene, we do have our people dispersed all over the place, in terms of cross-jurisdictional hazmat-type responses, certainly, we still have a lot of oil in the region, we'll have oil in the region for the foreseeable future, is there any plan to, or any discussion of further cooperation, some kind of either fee assessment from the industry companies, or just some kind of cooperative effort between us, the county, state, and feds, the way we do a fire, like you did in the Gibraltar fire, to address that? Because oftentimes, because you are the stakeholders, you're here, and sometimes you're the first ones there, might be a spill on the freeway from a tanker truck, it might be something abrupt in pipeline. Is there some, some kind of dialogue that's going forward that might address that in a more cohesive way, to give you the protocols to act, or to command, or at least to be the first response that coordinates the further response?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Rouse, the, the discussion, you know, it has to include the County Fire Department, and that's, those discussions are ongoing. But in terms of an area-wide response, what we have stood up over the last few years is what's called a Type III command organization. So, when we, when we respond, just say, for example, for a fire or a hazmat thing, just as, a department is an engine company, and it starts to grow, typically, we have called in a Type II management team, which is based at Los Padres National Forest, and it draws people from primarily tri-county area. And then, when things get substantial, say in the case of the T has a Zeta, we have what's called a national Type I Incident Management Team. I'm on one of those, and Marx is on one of those, a number of our people on one of those. But what we have done over the last couple of years with the County Fire Chiefs Association, we now have a Type III local organization that can manage a complex incident in its early phases. So, I would imagine, with anything like that, now, that's the type of organization we would be standing up. And it mirrors a Type II or Type I thing, you have an incident commander, an operations division, a planning, logistics, and we have all those people pre-identified now, and that team is, was exactly what we used at the Gibraltar fire. So, I would anticipate with a hazmat incident, with any type of rail derailment, something at the harbor, I would, I would anticipate that that Type III team would be stood up. And then that does, what that does is, through our relationship with the county, you start going, getting state resources, and then through the state, federal resources. So, that, the, that system is in place, whether we start aggressively using it, or find out where we would be more effective, and things like the Refugio oil spill, which was unusual by its nature, in that we're usually used to seeing something offshore coming onshore, and in this case, it was the exact opposite. So, in the future, I would see, probably expect to see a more robust command presence from the fireside than was true in that case.
Yeah, thank you. I was just so impressed watching and being at the Command Center for the Gibraltar fire, how quickly all the various jurisdictional assets were on scene and coordinated, and I wasn't sure that's exactly how the Refugio went thing. I thought, wow, if you could repeat that experience in all those situations, it would save us all a lot of grief.
And that was the type, that was the Type III, a local Type III team that was in place that day.
Great. I think we have a presentation as well, don't we?
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Joe in just a minute, but a couple of years ago, I was made aware of a program that was starting at UCSB's Bren School, and it was a collaborative, cross-disciplinary project. It was their first one, it was called a SEIR, S-E-I-R, which is Strategic Environmental Research Initiative. And their first one was on wildfire and climate change. So, we kind of invited ourselves out there, and we're really welcomed, I really want to specially recognize Dr. Sarah Anderson, and they allowed us to be participants in this, in this process. And as a result of that, we had a group of graduate students, who Joel talked about, who came out and did an evaluation of our Benefit Assessment District. We think it was a good, we thought it was a good program, but we wanted to see what a major research university would think about it, so.
And I'm not going to take up too much time talking about it. I just wanted to say that we have worked with this group of students for a year. They have been studying the assessment district and its effectiveness for the past year. They've been a pleasure to work with, and, you know, the, it's, you learn a lot of things when you have somebody from the outside studying your projects. And I think that we, we did learn quite a bit in this case. And they all three have a piece of this program, so I'm going to let them just get started on it, but it covers all of the different aspects of the Wildland Assessment District. So, I'm going to let Nico Allegria take it away.
Welcome, and you can use the podium here, and I have the mic on, and, well, yes, Mr. Cullen.
Madam Mayor, Chief McElroy did consult with me about conflict of interest issues, because we've got a few of us that have property in the assessment area. I don't believe there is a conflict of interest question with the council listening to this. You've already acted this year for the assessments, but I think the council members and I, with conflicts, shouldn't participate in any direction or related to this item.
So, receive the item, and if there's any future direction, that's, you'd have to leave the room if there's, if it looks like it's going in that direction. But I think we've asked most of the questions about, and like you said, we had that item on the agenda, so, but we'll see what you have to say, though. Who knows? We might have all these ideas or something. Welcome. Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. First of all, thank you so much for having us here today. My name is Julie Matos, and I'm here with my two colleagues, Nico Allegria and Sarah McCutcheon. And as I mentioned before, we're all three master students, graduating next month from UC Santa Barbara's Bren School of Environmental Science and Management. And over the last about year and a half, we've been working really closely with Santa Barbara City Fire Department and for our thesis research. So, more broadly, our thesis was looking at assessing the effectiveness of vegetation management in the wildland urban interface. And to do this, we use the Santa Barbara Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District as a case study, to see what works, what doesn't, and therefore, to be able to make recommendations moving forward. So, the three big research questions that we addressed were, how much do the residents of the district approve of and use the services provided? How effective are the vegetation management strategies at reducing fire risk? And what other cities in California could benefit from implementing a similar program? So, I mentioned this term, "wildland urban interface," and some of you may be really familiar with this, but let's do a quick refresher anyway. So, the wildland urban interface is commonly referred to as WUI, and it's the area where homes meet or intermingle with wildland vegetation. Between just 1970 and 2000, the WUI in California grew by over 12.5 million homes. The map on the right shows the distribution of wildland urban interface in the state of California. And as many of you may know, much of Santa Barbara falls within the WUI. Up to 70% of homes located in the wildland urban interface are at significant risk from fire. So, let's really look at some numbers to put this into perspective. Between 2004 and 2013, California faced over 37,000 wildfires, causing 1.6 million acres of land to burn, and resulting in over $4 billion in damages and firefighting costs. So, now that we've taken a big-picture look at the risks from wildfire in California, let's zoom into Santa Barbara and see what really makes it prone to wildfire. So, as many of you know, Santa Barbara has really hot, dry summers, steep slopes, deep canyons, and dry, flammable vegetation known as chaparral. On top of this, much of Santa Barbara has really narrow roads that make it difficult for firefighters to access certain locations. And Santa Barbara is in really close proximity to the Los Padres National Forest, and a fire started in the forest can quickly make its way down to the city, putting many in harm's way. So, to address the risk that all of these factors give to the city of Santa Barbara, the fire department- the fire department created this Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. So in 2006, residents of the foothill and extreme foothill zones of the city of Santa Barbara voted to approve the district to receive, they voted to approve a special assessment district that is focused primarily on providing additional firefighting protection in the wildland urban interface. And residents within the district pay yearly fee of approximately $75 to receive these additional services. These services are provided on two different scales. A smaller homeowner-scale services, which include chipping services, defensible space inspections, and roadside clearance, and bigger-scale services, which include vegetation management, and what you heard earlier referred to as a community fuels treatment network, which is a collaborative effort of the cities with Santa Barbara County that border the Los Padres National Forest, to create a fire break between the city and, between the forest and the city. And let me point out that this is a one-of-a-kind district. Santa Barbara is the only city with a special assessment district focused specifically on providing these additional fire protection benefits. And now I'm going to pass it over to Nico, who's going to talk to you about how we answered the first big question, which is, do people like it?
To address our first question, do residents approve of the district and whether or not they use the services, we conducted a 16-question survey. We sent this survey to over 3,000 residents in the district, shown in green above, and received nearly 500 responses designated by the red box in the upper green portion. As a means of comparison, we sent a survey out to 850 residents in the coastal zone and received about 100 designated in the red boxes in the yellow portion. We did this because the coastal zone is also designated as a high-fire hazard zone by the department due to narrow roads, steep vegetation, steep slopes, and dense vegetation. Now, I'm going to walk you through some of these results. First and foremost, 80% of respondents in the district currently approve of the district. Moreover, 72% of district respondents actively agree that it creates a safer community. So on the get-go, we're already looking good for public's opinion of the district. Now we're going to go into some more nuanced analysis. We asked, what is your perceived fire risk at your home? And if I can direct your attention to the graph on the left, you'll see that 70% of residents in the district accurately agree that they're in a high-fire hazard zone. In stark contrast, only 28% of residents in the coastal zones think they're in a high-fire hazard zone. To get a better understanding of this discrepancy across the landscape, we conducted a spatial interpolation, which is a fancy way of saying, we took the answers of survey respondents and used those answers to predict perceived risk across the entire landscape using statistical coding. So now if I can direct your attention to the map on the right, you'll see that areas of red and orange designate high-fire perceived risks are significantly closer to Los Padres National Forest, as well as the T-fire ignition point, which makes sense because over 200 homes burned during that fire. However, as I said, both these areas are designated as high-fire hazard risk. So lighter areas designate a clear discrepancy between fire risk perception and fire risk actuality. As Huli mentioned, there are homeowner services that the fire department provides to mitigate that fire risk. There's a road clearance, which acts as a way to slow fire movement across the landscape. Road clearance also provides easier access for emergency vehicles in the case of a fire, and it also reduces ignitions from cars driving through the road. Next, they do defensible space inspections, where a fire department comes, a member of the fire department comes to your house and walks you through the guidelines. And I think we've all kind of got a good idea what defensible space is at this point. And they also provide chipping services, they chip vegetation cleared from someone's home. And these services are only as good as they are used. So we asked residents, have you ever used a chipping service? Which we see a 50/50 response, which when you think across the whole district, that's pretty good. That's over 1,000 homes participating at some point. However, a more alarming response was 60% of residents have not used a defensible space inspections. Fortunately, we asked why they have never used these services. So first, we asked, why have you never used a free chipping service? And other responses, we allowed them to answer, "other" was the most common response. And we teased out the top three comments to get people do it themselves, they have their own gardener, or the timing doesn't work for them. Looking at these answers, we realized this was a great opportunity to improve usage of these services. So we were developing a strategic communication program and developed a target audience of those who have never heard of it, those who don't think it would be useful, and half of those that don't think it pertains to their property, as a target audience for, to work with communication to improve the outreach and usage of these services. We also asked the same thing for defensible space. And once again, "other" was the most common response. And of those responses, procrastination was the number-one response, meaning that they just wanted to do it, but they never got around to actually calling or filling out the form. Next was unclear scheduling, because they wanted, they wanted to schedule it, but they just, they never got around to doing it either. And also, finally, they were scared of the word inspections, because when you're a homeowner, you hear inspections, you think there's going to be fees or penalties levied on you, when in fact, that's not the point of the service. Once again, we realized this is a great opportunity that with strategic communication, we can raise awareness of this service, as defensible space is one of the leading factors in a home surviving a wildfire. So we developed a target audience with all those who had never heard of it, those who don't think it would be useful, those who don't have time, and half of those who don't think it pertains to their property, to develop a huge target audience that with strategic communication, the fire department can greatly improve the usage of this service. So I've mentioned strategic communication several times. And what I mean by this is first, the fire department needs to create a strong social media presence. And in fact, they've already worked with us, and they're developing a YouTube channel which helps, which shows instructional videos, as well as trusted community members discussing the importance of these services. The majority of survey respondents offered us their emails, which suggests that the community is willing and able to communicate through email. So a more regular newsletter showing the importance of defensible space, awareness during high-fire hazard season, as well as the ecological uniqueness of Santa Barbara, could really, really raise awareness and help improve people's awareness and fire perceptions. And also, change the word inspection to more, to a term that better reflects what they're actually trying to do with that service. And the fire department is also already working on changing that as well. And a lot of, a lot of, the reason why people don't use the services is scheduling times are hard. And we realized that the fire department only can work in a confined timeframe, but we believe if they open up their range of time availability, they can greatly improve upon usage. And while there has been underutilization of the two services, the fact that 80% of people agree that the district helps them, and that 72% of residents believe it keeps them safe, that it's already a resounding success in the public's eye. And now Sarah's going to talk about vegetation management.
Thanks, Nico. So now that we know that the program is approved of by the residents, we wanted to see how effective that vegetation management was at reducing fire risk. And in particular, we wanted to look at areas known as vegetation management units. These are select areas throughout the city that the fire department has selected for the unique set of hazards found on site. This could be the dense, flammable vegetation there, or the difficulty in accessing the site due to the roads and topography in the area. We looked at five of those vegetation management units to model because we, because they represent the vegetation found throughout the city of Santa Barbara. To model these vegetation management units, we used a fire modeling software known as Behave Plus, and it's commonly used by the U.S. Forest Service. So I'm going to walk you through how we use that model. So as you may imagine, some of the inputs for that model are vegetation type, slope, wind speed, and the amount of vegetation found on site. For wind speed, we had two different scenarios. The first was to model the normal weather conditions, where you have maybe a six-mile-per-hour wind. And the second was to model our more extreme wind conditions known as sundowners. So for that, we upped the wind speed to 60 miles per hour. And we also had two scenarios for amount of vegetation found on site. The original amount of vegetation represented the site as-is before any clearing has been done by the fire department. And then we changed it for after the removal, once the fire department has gone in and removed that vegetation, to get our new fire risk metrics. And those are rate of spread, so how fast is that fire moving across the landscape, the heat per unit area, so how much heat is that fire giving off per a given length, and flame length. So this is one of the results from that analysis. You can see on the x-axis, we have the percent of vegetation removed, and on the y-axis, we have the percent reduction in fire risk. So you'll notice that as you remove more vegetation, you have an increased reduction in fire risk metrics, which sounds a little bit confusing, but really, it's just as you remove more vegetation, things get better. I'll have you note that we don't see any significant reductions in rate of spread until you've removed almost about 80% of that vegetation. So just take note that the non-shaded area is the range that the fire department typically works within. It's about 1/2 to 2/3 vegetation removal. Anything below 50%, and you don't really see those reductions in the fire risk metrics. And anything above 2/3 vegetation removal, and you kind of run into issues of potentially changing the landscape permanently. So in this range, we still see substantial reductions in fire line intensity and flame length, but once again, only minimal reductions in rate of spread. So if we can tease out just one of those fire risk metrics, which is flame length, you can see that under pre-management scenarios for those sundowner, extreme wind conditions, you can see flame lengths upwards of 50 feet. However, once you've gone in and managed that site, that flame length is reduced to about 17 feet, which seems really great on its face, but it actually only brings you back down to pre-management scenarios for standard wind conditions. So this just reiterates the need for the heightened awareness during these sundowner wind conditions, where our management efforts may not be as effective as they would be given normal wind conditions. So with this in mind, some of our recommendations that we gave the fire department were to focus our funds and efforts on those sites that can receive a 2/3 fuel reduction. Since you already have the upfront cost paid for at the site for the equipment, the biological assessment, the upfront costs of manpower, you really only have small marginal costs going forward between the 1/2 and the 2/3 fuel removal. We also recommend that they target the vegetation management units that exist already within the community fuels treatment network. And as you may remember from Huli, and earlier, we mentioned that this is a collaborative effort between all the cities and the county to create a fuel break between the Los Padres National Forest and the city boundary. So if you target those areas that exist already within that network, you are not only protecting the specific locations, but you're also protecting the network as a whole. And lastly, we believe that they should develop a volunteer biological monitoring program. This would be in addition to the biological assessments that are already conducted at the site, and it would be a great way to engage the community members, potentially students from the local universities and city college. And it would just really create a log of long-term management and data of the site to make sure we're not permanently altering the site. So now that we know that the district is successful and residents approve of it, we wanted to see where else in California we could implement one. So we determined the four factors that make this program successful in Santa Barbara, and we worked with experts from the Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council to weight these four factors. And then from there, we selected for local responsibility areas only. And we kind of already brought that topic today. You don't want to have states, the double taxation issue between the state's responsibility areas and the local responsibility areas. So from this, we developed a suitability score for all of cities throughout California. It's an index between 0 and 12, with the Santa Barbara foothill region actually scoring the highest 12 for suitability. The cities that scored low are in the light purple, and the high is the dark purple. So now that we know what cities are suitable based on their landscape characteristics, we wanted to see what the probability was for cities actually implementing the district. So we worked with SCI Consulting Group, which is a group that specializes in these assessment districts. And they let us know that in order to vote in favor of a special assessment district, you have to be a relatively wealthy city. So we took our landscape suitability and filtered out any cities that have an income of less than, or below, less than 25% of Santa Barbara's income and below. And that gave us our new suitability map. So these are the top 10 most suitable cities based on that analysis. And you can see that for cities such as Truckee that are smaller, they actually may be able to implement a citywide special assessment district, while cities like San Diego that are larger may want to follow Santa Barbara's, may want to follow Santa Barbara and implement only a neighborhood or community-specific assessment district. So from this, we are actually in the process of finalizing an implementation guide that we hope can be circulated to the California Association of Council of Governments to share this information and kind of help them navigate the somewhat difficult process of implementing a special fire management district. And so just to go over again, the district has a resounding approval. It may be because the district is effective at reducing those fire risks, given the vegetation management unit, or vegetation management. And we determined that over 80 cities can be benefiting right now from a similar district. So we hope going forward, some of these cities will heed our recommendations and adopt this special fire management district, not only protecting themselves, but also protecting more of California as a whole. So we just want to thank the Bren School, SCI Consulting Group, the City of Santa Barbara Fire Department, and the Santa Barbara County Fire Safe Council. Thanks.
Great presentation. Thank you very much. Yeah, very nice. Chief, anything else?
No, that's it. I didn't bring my red nose thing with Chief Crumback, so, anyway. No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, we are adjourned.